I think so. I think so.
I've had another meeting I set up. Sacred Heart.
So we just.
A sacred heart.
And the sacred heart?
Yeah, I've been determined. Who funded that? Thirty years.
Thirty years.
Ever since I was kind of good.
Really?
Yeah.
Wow.
In ninety, ninety-one.
Very.
Yes.
Wow.
That's.
Como les ayuda ya las señoras?
Muy bien, muy bien. I'd like to call this man to order. This is, uh, Laredo College, uh, Finance Committee Meeting, Finance and Audit Committee Meeting, and, uh, I would also like for knowledge that we have the presence of, uh, before we have to name their name.
Mr. Rahel President.
Mr. Rahel, and, uh, I was asked, uh, to preside at this board meeting, and I'm going to put him on penis. Uh, we will wait for Miss Bella, um, hopefully that she will be able to make it literally, literally long, all right? So the presence right now, so two members of the committee with a third hoping that will be a I would like to call Mr. Sisavella for the preliminary financial report of the twenty, going through August.
Good evening, uh, board members, Dr. Ramirez, for the record, Sisavella, Vice President of Finance and Administration. Um, with your board package issued, I've received a copy of the, uh, twenty August, uh, twenty twenty-two preliminary preliminary, uh, financial report. We are in the process of closing out the fiscal year, uh, and that process is, uh, should be finalized by the, uh, December Board Meeting, uh, we will have the auditors coming in, uh, the second, third week of October. Uh, so the accounting office and the, uh, finance, uh, office are currently working on, uh, closing out the, uh, fiscal year for twenty twenty-two. Uh, so as of August thirty-first, the revenue, uh, totals sixty-one million, seven hundred six thousand, eight hundred thirty-seven. That's a hundred five point five percent of our budgeted revenue. Uh, so, uh, we should be showing right now, uh, uh, additional revenue of three point three million for the, uh, fiscal year. Uh, state appropriation were at a hundred percent. Uh, and, uh, to the local funds, which included tuition and fees, uh, were a hundred and seven point nine percent, and that's already, uh, including the, uh, payments that were made, uh, to cover the, uh, revenue bonds. Uh, as far as the, uh, current taxes, uh, we collected a hundred percent of what we budgeted, which was thirty-nine point five million, we collected thirty-nine point six million. Uh, we were, uh, sixty-nine thousand over our projections. Uh, as far as the, uh, other funds, uh, we did, uh, budget for four point two million of the, uh, her funding, uh, and, uh, we, uh, charged six point seven million based on the tuition waivers for the fall and spring semesters. Uh, as far as the, uh, operating expenses, the total, uh, expenses for the fiscal year were fifty-five point four million out of a sixty-one point seven million dollar budget. That represents eighty-nine point eighty-six percent of our budgeted expenditures. Uh, we are working on closing out the fis- fiscal year, so we do still have a couple, uh, entries that need to be recorded, uh. Uh, primarily, we do have the, uh, Gatsby, uh, entries for those liabilities for the, uh, pension plan and the health, uh, health insurance for retirees that we're still pending, we're working with ERS and ERS to record those, uh, uh, entries. Uh, for the year, we are showing a balance of four million seventy-one thousand, sixty-seven dollars, uh, savings. Uh, as far as the other, uh, funds, um, the, uh, special appropriations, uh, the Economic Development Center, um, we had a budget of, uh, two hundred six thousand, uh, revenues were five hundred forty-eight thousand, sixteen hundred fourteen, uh, and that again, as we mentioned in the past. It's attributed to the, uh, Laredo Cares two point oh program that we have with the city. Uh, we did, uh, coordinate some of those trainings through the, uh, Economic Development Center. Uh, and so that was the additional revenue that was, uh, that came into the fiscal year. As far as the expenses, the expenses total two hundred two thousand, nine hundred thirty-five. Uh, so we have a net change to the fund balance, uh, or, uh, an increase of two hundred forty-five thousand, six hundred seventy-nine. We had projected that we were actually going to use forty thousand of the fund balance to, uh, for the year to cover the, uh, expenses for the year. Uh, there was no need, uh, again, that was thanks, uh, to the, uh, Laredo Cares, uh, two point eight, two point oh program. Uh, as far as the auxiliary services, uh, the revenue was one point four million for the year, uh, expenses of eight hundred seventy-four thousand, four hundred and sixty-seven, uh, that's an increase of five hundred seventy-five thousand, two hundred eighty-four for the, uh, fiscal year. Uh, restricted funds, uh, we had revenues of forty-three point one million, expenses of forty-three point one. Uh, the only item to note there is that we still have about two point two million dollars left from the curve funding. Uh, we have already allocated one point five for the, uh, incentive that we'll be offering for students. Uh, we talked about three hundred, uh, dollars per student for, uh, a meal plan. Uh, as well, and as well, we do have an allocation of about three hundred thousand for the, uh, software, uh, initiate, or the services that we're going for the student services area. So that will be covered, uh, through the care side, so again, uh, we have about two point two million still left in the curve funding. Uh, we have until the, uh, end of May, of next year to, uh, complete, uh, the funding for that program. Uh, facilities master plan, the only change, uh, here is that, uh, we did make the adjustment for the LC contribution of two hundred and sixty-six thousand, and this is related to the, uh, roofing project here at the Fort McIntosh campus. Uh, the board had approved, uh, a contribution from the bookstore fund balance of two hundred and sixty-six thousand to cover the repairs at the, uh, Fort McIntosh bookstore. Uh, that project has been completed, and therefore we have made the transfer over from the, uh, LC, uh, bookstore fund balance to the facilities master plan basically to cover, uh, the, the cost of that particular building for that project. Uh, at the end of the fiscal year, we still have a balance of seventeen point seven million. Uh, we do have a couple of projects that we're working on, uh, we are projecting or expecting to have a number from the contractor to bring back to the board for approval at the October meeting for the Lamarboi Berlada, uh, environmental center upgrades, uh, for that project, so again, we're working and, and expecting to get that number, so.
Bring up also the imaginary.
Uh, the imaginary actually is on the agenda for this board meeting, uh, church, uh, it'll be reviewed tomorrow at the construction. As far as the tax collections, as of August thirty-first, we collected ninety-nine percent of the, uh, tax levy. Uh, we had budgeted for a ninety-nine percent collection rate, uh, we met that, uh, that rate. Uh, so out of a tax levy of thirty-nine million, nine hundred eighty-seven thousand, seven hundred nineteen, we collected thirty-nine million, six hundred fifty-six thousand, eight hundred eighty-one, uh, and this is, uh, on the M and O component, uh, for maintenance and operation. Uh, we do have a balance, uh, which will now, uh, be showing in our delinquent account receivable of three hundred thirty thousand, eight hundred thirty-nine for the fiscal year. Uh, the investments, uh, as of July thirty-first, twenty twenty-two, uh, we do have one change, and that is, uh, we have, uh, purchased, uh, an investment, uh, of, uh, US treasury notes, and those are our entitlement plus of, uh, three point three million. Uh, and, uh, yield to maturity is, uh, three point zero one percent. Uh, we are seeing interest rates go up specifically in, uh, US T bills. Um, so we are taking that, uh, opportunity, uh, this is a one-year, uh, T bill. The maturity will be, uh, August thirty-first of twenty twenty-three, and again, it is, uh, yielding at three point zero one percent. Uh, you can see that, uh, our money market account interest has also gone up. It is currently yielding as, well, at the end of July, it was yielding one point sixty-two percent. Uh, both the, uh, loan star investment pool and the, uh, FIT investment pool have also gone up. Uh, the loan star investment pool was yielding one point seventy-three percent, and the FIT investment pool was yielding one point forty-six at the end of, uh, July. Uh, total investments, uh, as of July thirty-first, total a hundred six, excuse me, a hundred six million, seven hundred sixty-eight thousand, nine hundred six dollars. Uh, and finally, we have the, uh, preliminary fund balance, uh, general operating fund balance. Uh, for the year, we began the, the fund balance with a negative two million, five hundred forty-five thousand, seven hundred forty-four. We had revenue of sixty-five million, seventy-three thousand, two hundred seventy-six for the, uh, year. Uh, expenditures of fifty-five million, four hundred forty-nine thousand, six hundred seventy-two. Uh, we do have already reflected the, uh, twenty percent, uh, that will be going to the deferred maintenance, uh, fund, and that is twenty percent of the, uh, annual savings, uh, so that totals, uh, two million. Oh, I'm sorry, this is, this is actually the, uh, the transfer for the last fiscal year savings, I'm sorry, of two million, four hundred ten thousand, eight hundred fifty-four. Uh, we do are still pending, uh, to pull the seven million, out of the seven million, two hundred twelve thousand, eight hundred fifty, uh, we will be doing a twenty percent of that amount transferred to the deferred maintenance, uh, for, uh, this year's deferred maintenance projects. So, uh, once we take into account those, uh, adjustments, uh, the preliminary, uh, net change to the fund balance is four million, six hundred sixty-seven thousand, one hundred six. Now, keep in mind that we do also have, uh, five million that has already been encumbered for the Martinez Fine Arts, uh, Center, uh, HVAC, uh, project, and also one point three million that will be used, uh, to purchase equipment for this, uh, fiscal year. So again, we are, uh, utilizing, uh, all of the, uh, seven point two million of savings, uh, for deferred maintenance projects, uh, the, uh, Martinez Fine Arts Center HVAC project and, uh, equipment for this, uh, this facility. And that concludes the, uh, financial report, uh, the preliminary financial report, uh, as of August twenty twenty-two. Uh, any questions?
Do you have any questions? For the presentation, sir. It's very good. Okay, we'll go on to item number four. That is the approval of a five-year agreement with Avaya for cloud office phone system migration. Again, Mr. Vela.
Yes, um, so I'm going to ask, um, Mr. Alves, uh, Charles, uh, to, uh, make a quick, uh, update and presentation on that one item.
Okay. To the members of the Finance and Audit Committee, Albert Charles, fellow CEO and President of Information Technology. For this particular item, we're requesting approval to enter into a five-year contract with Avaya for their cloud, uh, Avaya Cloud Office Phone System. Uh, for this particular, uh, solution, the purchase will, uh, will be done under three different contracts. The service itself will be, is, uh, under a TIPS contract, two one oh three oh three for the, and that'll be for the monthly phone services. And then TIPS contract, two one oh one oh one for the telephones that will be acquired as part of the solution, and then DIR, uh, T E L E D T S A dash zero zero six for the professional service. Uh, Laredo College has been using Avaya phone system since two thousand eleven. So, uh, it started in, in a couple of buildings, and it's a campus remodel building, so it was expanded to other, uh, locations at the campus, and today we do have Avaya across the campus, and it's a voice-over IP solution that is managed here locally at the campus. Uh, during the, the COVID, um, two years, uh, where staff was working remotely, there were some downfalls that came with the current system. Uh, the current system has a, a soft phone, which is basically an application that you can install on a laptop to be able to access your, your phone extension on campus. The application was, was not very dependable and relied on, on VPN connection, and we did experience some issues throughout that time. Um, the staff reached out to Avaya, and we were running the current, the, the most latest version of the solution, and we were advised that, uh, they, in, for the future, were converting their phones as a permanent on-premise to a cloud service provider, following the model of most companies. So we did the research and, and did actually approve a concept here at, at the campus, tested the solution and all of its functionality, and the, the staff recommended that it would be a good solution for us to migrate, uh, phone service to the cloud in case we do have to, uh, work off campus like we did during COVID, we would have a dependable solution. If I, if I may, I did prepare a short, uh, it's five, five PowerPoint slides, if you, if you would like, I, I know there were some questions in the preliminary agenda review. I brought the information, uh, but you let me know if you have a way to proceed.
It's up to you all.
We're fine with it, we're fine.
That's fine, Mr. Charles, thank you. And, uh, the numbers again for the, and it's already been budgeted, uh, for the first year. The total is two hundred and thirteen thousand, five hundred and thirty-nine with sixty cents, and that's, uh, the, uh, the expense for the first year. And that includes, uh, the, the, uh, subscription for the phone service, uh, the phones themselves, and the installation services. One thing that I just want to point out, just for full transparency, the phones are, uh, in what is called the phone as a service model, so we technically don't, do not own them, so they're on a, on a contract for five years, fully warranty for any damages or repair. So that's something that is not a lead, so we don't have the option to purchase them. So at the end of the five years, we return the phones, and if you want to continue with the service, you're going to enter another contract.
But they'll, excuse me.
Uh, the chair recognizes Dr. Ramirez.
But they'll replace them if there's a problem, like, correct?
Of course, there's, there's full warranty on the phone. Thank you.
Any comments, questions?
None.
Okay, thank you very much, Charles. We now go on to the next one. And that is number five. And that is the approval to use the Student Activities Fund Balance for the purchase of computer equipment and student ID system, Mr. Vela.
Uh, yes, uh, board members, uh, we're going to be asking for approval to use the Student Activities Fund Balance, uh, to purchase computer equipment for the, uh, game room here at the Fort McIntosh campus, and also to, uh, upgrade our student ID system. Uh, the purchase of the computers is being done from Dell Technologies in the amount of twenty-two thousand, two hundred sixty-seven dollars and forty-one cents, and the, uh, student ID system is from Identity Sys, Inc., in the amount of seventy-six thousand, nine hundred thirty-nine dollars, uh. The, uh, purchase of the computers is a Texas DIR contract, PSO number three seven six three, and the purchase of the ID system is being done using a TIPS contract number two one 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 zero two. Uh, the, uh, Student Activities Fund Balance at the beginning of the fiscal year had one point nine million, uh, available. Uh, the total amount, uh, for both of these purchases will be ninety-nine thousand, two hundred six dollars and forty-one cent. Uh, so the, uh, adjusted Student Activities Fund Balance after this purchase will be one million, eight hundred fifteen thousand, nine hundred fifty-nine dollars and fifty-nine cent. Uh, again, the, uh, computers will be used by students here at the, uh, game room, uh, for recreational and competition purposes, and the student ID system will be an upgrade to the current student ID system, this, uh, upgrade will allow us to use the system to offer meal plans to our students that our cafeteria vendors will be able to utilize, uh, to, uh, um, keep track of those, uh, purchases.
That's the initiative you wanted to do.
Yeah, that's fine, because right now we can't, we don't have enough, we are, our current ID system doesn't allow our students to swipe them for vendors, and this will.
And that will be, uh, available.
Yes, sir.
Which would be a plus for us.
Absolutely.
Excellent, that was very good for the presentation, sir.
Thank you.
Any comments or questions? None? Uh, go ahead, sir, continue with item six, and that is the approval of the acquisition of cereals and periodical services from EB SEO Information Services.
So, Mr. of the Board, uh, this item is an annual item that we bring to the, uh, board for approval. It is part of the, uh, budgeted, uh, line item for the library. Um, it is the approval of the acquisition of cereals and periodical services from EB School Information Systems. Uh, the, uh, purchase order amount to be approved is, uh, not to exceed hundred fifty-three thousand, nine hundred sixty-eight dollars. Again, it is already budgeted in the general operating, uh, budget for twenty twenty-three. Uh, again, this is used to pay the, uh, academic research databases, EB, ebook purchases, uh, digital magazines, uh, journals, uh, periodicals, and again, uh, um, also, uh, provides other services, uh, to the library. Any questions?
There's no problem whatsoever then. We certainly are, have the funding for it, correct?
That is correct, it's, it's already built into the, uh, the library services, uh, budget for twenty twenty-three.
Excellent. Okay, any questions? None? We shall continue then with item number seven, and that is the ratification of a contract with ED two GO slash SendGage for the purchase of online classes, again, Mr. Vela.
Yes, so, Mr. of the Board, uh, we're asking, uh, for ratification of the contract with, uh, Ed to Go SendGage for the purchase of online classes. Uh, we currently have an MOU, uh, with Ed to Go SendGage, uh, to offer online courses for our continuing at, uh, department. As part of the Laredo Cares two point oh, uh, we did see an increase in, uh, these, uh, services, uh, and therefore, uh, because we are, uh, spending more than the fifty thousand dollar threshold, we have to bring these items to the board for approval. Again, we do have an MOU that has already been approved. Um, the courses that were, uh, taken or were, uh, part of these, uh, online courses, uh, for the month of February twenty twenty-two through August twenty twenty-two included the Certified Medical Administrative Assisting Course, the Paralegal Course, and the COMPI, PIA uh, IT Fundamental Course, uh, there was a total of approximately sixty, uh, six students, uh, that, uh, use this, uh, service. Uh, and including your package is a copy of the MOU and the, uh, org prices, uh, that are charged for these, these courses.
It involves approximately eighty-six thousand, eight hundred and seventy dollars?
That is correct.
Same with you?
The, the total for these courses, uh, that were taken from the month of February twenty twenty-two to August twenty twenty-two, uh, total eighty-six thousand, eight hundred seventy dollars. Uh, again, the, uh, this is all being covered by the Laredo Cares two point oh.
Forty-one, fifteen, and ten, we're looking at approximately sixty-six students that are involved online, correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Excellent, very good. Okay, any comments or questions?
Okay.
None? All right, we then continue on. Item number eight, the approval to increase the work study hourly rate, again, Mr. Vela.
Yes, um, Mr. of the Board, uh, we are asking for approval to increase the work study hourly rates. Uh, as part of the, uh, fiscal twenty twenty-three, uh, general operating budget, the board approved the hourly rate for work study employees at seven twenty-five and nine dollars an hour. Uh, we are, uh, requesting that the, uh, rate be increased to ten dollars an hour, and it is, this is being, uh, done to, uh, attract and retain, uh, work study, uh, students. Uh, the funding is coming from the federal work study, uh, program. Uh, the total, uh, is six hundred fifty thousand, nine hundred eighteen, that is the current allocation for this fiscal year. Uh, the, uh, budget will not be, uh, increased, uh. We will be making adjustments to the number of students that we can service. At this point right now, we have, uh, the current budget, uh, can service up to two hundred six students. Uh, so we're looking at probably having to adjust that for the spring semester, again, it all depends on how many students we, we can attract with this, uh, rate increase, and again, uh, one possibility is that if we do have a high demand, also looking at other, other funding to try to, uh, help that, help out as many students as we can.
That's very good, uh, the ten dollars, and that hopefully that will bring in more students into the program, and that will obviously be a benefit to the stu- for the student population.
So the issue right now is we were paying seven twenty-five, and we had open positions, and students were not applying. And that's because they can find outside part-time employment. Um, I mean, we have some convenience, uh, uh, fast food restaurants paying fifteen dollars an hour.
That's right.
And we can't compete, and therefore, for retention purposes, to try to retain our students is, is the idea is maybe we're not gonna be able to offer the job to as many students, but the two hundred and six that we're gonna help, we're gonna help, and we're gonna help them with something a little more substantial than, you know, twelve hours a week at seven twenty-five, well, that's just not.
No, no.
It's not helpful, that doesn't even pay for the gas.
Yeah, that's right.
So, um.
Perhaps maybe even you might consider increasing it a little bit more than even ten dollars.
Well.
As a possibility.
Well, if we had more funding from the state, maybe, so, I mean, this is all federal money, this is the federal work study money. Uh, the idea is that if we have other funds available, uh, then we'll shift monies over to try to add more student positions, student employee positions, because that gives us an opportunity to use their work as an internship, as a paid internship at the same time, and, and certainly keep our students here as long as we possibly can, uh, and in school.
Very good.
And, uh, are, are we promoting it?
Yes.
With our own.
Well, we will, as soon as we get it approved.
Yeah, so then we'll, we'll be able to promote it and, and try to like push it as much as possible.
Yes, and as long as, that they have to be enrolled for a minimum of six hours so that they can then be employed on campus.
Very cool, and can just, for the record, can you just, just a quick brief of what type of duties are?
So it depends on the office, uh, there are different, there are different job responsibilities. So it depends on the office, uh, there are different, there are different job responsibilities, so for example. Uh, i- i- if you're, if you're a student employee in, in the bursar's office, it will be different than if you're a student employee at the recruitment office or at the rec center. You may be a student employee in the Kason Center. And so your responsibilities may be different, and if you're a student employee for. Uh, let's say one of the academic departments or one of the, the, the workforce departments. Well, you may be answering the phone, you may be uh, going to the mail, you may be, you know, distributing mail, you may be doing uh. Uh, filing, you may be doing scanning, you may be doing, there's, there's, it's. Some are clerical and some might not be, at the rec center, it may not be uh, clerical, it may be. Different duties, yeah, and so each office has a different responsibility, but. Uh, what we wanna do is try to help our students grow and develop and so that when they do leave here. They have some soft skills. That we've been able to give them from our offices at the same time that they're getting um, payment for it.
Excellent, this is a great program, like you said. It's good to, to put it on a resume, at least you come in with at, at least a year, two years of clerical experience. You know, um, so this is a great opportunity for, for kids that are going into getting a certification or certificate or, or moving on to. The higher ed, but it's a great opportunity for them to later on apply for a job and they at least have a little bit. You know, of history to fall back on, a work history, to fall back, this is a great opportunity for kids.
Thank you.
Excellent.
Good job.
And if it could be, uh, if there's additional monies available, there's no reason why.
Right.
You should not be able to include that.
It does affect our, our other. Part-time employees, and so we have other employees that are hourly that are saying, well, if you're gonna pay the students ten dollars, then what am I gonna get paid, right? So we have to, we have to balance that as well. Uh, so, but, at, at least for now, I, I think the, the average within. You know, the area, and I mean, we're never gonna compete with a fifteen dollar. It's hard to do that, but. For students that wanna be on campus, it is convenient for them not to have to drive somewhere, that they can work here, go to school here. Uh, and then still have fun here.
I, I was about to say that it gives it a little bit of a life, because I think with the incentive that you're doing with the meal plan as well. You keep them on campus and they'll start talking to their friends. And some of them might be working somewhere else at a gas station or something, maybe, maybe making four dollars an hour. But they could say, I could stay in campus, earn ten, but then on top of that, I'll be there, won't have to spend money on gas and all that, so.
And every year, we get a, we get, uh, when uh, Stephen Agudat, the director of finance, they request the money. He typically requests over a, a little over a million dollars. Uh, and so if, as long as you continue to use it, you're, we can continue to get it. Ideally, next year, um, depending on how our, um.
Finances.
Our, our, well, no, how the federal government finances go, we may be able to lobby for a little more than five hundred thousand. Uh, so that maybe they can increase it to at least seven hundred and fifty thousand, and, and it, it really makes a difference.
Good.
Good job.
Good. Nice. Okay, we go into item number nine, and that is the approval to send the temporary staffing contract, again, Mr. Villa.
Yes, uh, board members, this uh, one item is to request the board to approve us to extend the uh. Uh, temporary staffing contract with elite employment on a month-to-month basis uh, through the end of uh, December twenty twenty two. Uh, we're currently working on uh, an R F P uh, to request uh. These services. Uh, the board uh, approved uh, this contract back in twenty seventeen, it was a five-year agreement, uh, which uh, came to an end. At the end of uh, the fiscal year of twenty twenty two. Uh, again, uh, the extension of the month-to-month will allow us a time that is needed to uh, finalize. The R F P and, and uh, get new proposals uh, for these services.
This is uh, additional information, of course, this is a independent uh. Employment organization that uh, provides uh, uh. Employees to, that, that do the maintenance to the campus here, and, and not only here at Fort Mac, but also. In the south campus.
That is correct, church, uh, this uh, uh. The employment uh, service or company uh, provides uh. Custodial grounds, uh, general maintenance, event setup, warehouse, and office works uh.
Good.
On an as-needed basis uh, to the institution. Uh, again, these are uh. Line items that are budgeted by departments, as one of the contracted services, uh, line item. Uh, so again, uh, right now, the plan is to uh, issue out a request for a proposal to try to hire uh. A company that would address the custodial part of the uh, of the services, uh, and again, uh. Maintain uh, uh, an agreement uh, for the other needs, which are again, uh, event setups, warehouses, and office works.
Any other question?
Nope.
None? All right, we have a, a German being made at this time. It is, it is six oh five.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much, appreciate your presence, and thank you.